Welcome everyone to the eighth League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum of the 2020 election year. My name is Andy Polley and I am the current president of your local League of Women Voters. Just a few quick reminders and important information before we get started this evening. If you've joined us for a forum in the past, you have seen this screen before, so don't be surprised by it, but it is a little bit different this time around because early voting has already begun. Early voting began yesterday and it goes through the 15th. There are five locations that any registered voter in St. Lucie County, you can vote at any one of those five locations. If you choose to wait until Election Day because that's your tradition, that's fine. You just have to do it at a polling place, your assigned polling place. And if you don't know what that is, you can go to the Supervisor of Elections website at slcelections.com and look it up. You can find out other information about your mail-in ballot. If you have a mail-in ballot and you've already sent it back and you want to see where it is and track its location, you can find that too at that same website. Just click the mail-in ballot prompt at the top of the screen and then put in your voter registration information. As I said, Election Day is August 18th. Mail-in ballots must be received by August 18th at 7:00 p.m. You can mail them, but we suggest you do so as soon as possible so that you ensure that they get there on time, or you can drop them off at any early voting location as they are listed here on the screen, or any of the four Supervisor of Elections offices within the county. We highly suggest that you visit our website, l w b s l c dot org, to learn more about the League of Women Voters and how you can get involved and learn more about what's going on in elections and the candidates in this county. And we also encourage you to visit vote411.org to learn more about these candidates and all the other candidates on your ballot. The questions that you'll hear in this forum differ from those that appear on Vote 411, so you'll learn even more by visiting and become an even more educated voter. So we highly encourage you to visit vote411.org. And the census for 2020 is out and active. If you have not returned your census information, please do and save a census worker a trip to your house. And so now on to the forum. The format for this afternoon's forum will consist of a 90-second introduction by each candidate followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And finally, the candidates will make a two-minute closing statement. The order of candidates was randomly selected earlier. This is not a debate, so candidates will make their statements and we'll move on to the next candidate or question. Candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds remaining and again when their time is up. I don't think I've said it before because I've done so many of these forums at this point, I'm starting to lose track of where I am, but today's forum is for the candidates for County Commissioner, District One in the Republican race. Our moderator for this forum is Carol Wyatt, as she has been with us all the other previous forums. Carol is the co-owner and operator of the local radio stations WPSL in Fort St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She's the president of WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, past president of the Rotary Club of Fort St. Lucie, and a member of the Fort St. Lucie Business Women. Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to move to Florida in 1993. We are honored, as always, to have her as our moderator for yet another forum, and so now I'm going to toss it over to Carol.
Well, thank you. This is our eighth forum by the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County, and we thank the members of the League for developing the questions. We thank our candidates for participating today, and we thank everyone watching and listening for informing themselves in a very challenging year. Today, the St. Lucie County Commission, District One, it is a term of four years. It's a countywide race. It is partisan, so in this primary election, one Democrat and one Republican will be selected to race, to face each other in November. Our candidates for the Republican side of the race are Betty Jo Stark and Ryan Edward Collins. They're with us today. Roland Dorsonville is on the ballot. He was invited and he may join us during the forum today. So let's start with the opening statements and our first candidate, Betty Jo Stark.
Well, thank you. Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Betty Jo Stark. I am Republican candidate for St. Lucie County Commission, District One. Why am I running? We need a county commission that is responsive to the voices of its citizens. And at this point in time, where we are is a juncture where the voter is making the choice that's going to be affecting all the taxpayers and the citizens, and it will also have an effect upon our freedom and our quality of life, as well as our founding principles. I feel very strongly about the growth of government. It's getting out of hand, which is leading to higher taxes and unaffordable housing and our quality of life is being infringed upon because government is growing for the sake of government as opposed to services for the sake of citizens. As the government grows, this is, as I'm saying, is imposing on quality of life issues. So we're at a critical juncture, and as the voters are the ones making, they may not always be impacted by the tax, as the taxpayers are, but their freedoms will be impacted. That's why you've got to choose somebody who is your constitutional candidate and your Bill of Rights candidate and your God, country, and family candidate.
Okay, thank you, Betty Jo Stark. Now opening a statement for Ryan Collins.
Hi, thanks Carol, and thanks for the League of Women Voters. It's been difficult, of course, with the virus to get out and reach people, so I definitely appreciate what you guys do. I've always enjoyed watching your presentations and your moderation in the past, so thanks for having us. My name is Ryan Collins. I'm a Republican candidate for St. Lucie County Commission and District One. My main motivation to serve was really that I want to bring better representation to the people of St. Lucie County. For far too long, we've watched taxpayers' dollars mismanaged while businesses and property owners end up paying the highest property tax rates in the state of Florida. I want to change that. I believe that our county government needs to get back to the basics and prioritize the things like roads, flooring, taxes, safety issues, definitely updating infrastructure. You know, that's the biggest thing that I see these days is them, is not being focused on the things that they're really meant to be, meant to be in charge of and going off in investments and things like that, which leads to these high taxes. So I'm a lifelong resident of St. Lucie County. I live in Fort Pierce with my wife Courtney and our two children. I have a hospitality management degree as well as several state licenses. I've owned, managed, and worked for small businesses in construction, insurance, and real estate, and I want to bring that in, that experience that I have in small business to the, to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now let's go to the first question. We will start with Betty Jo Stark. Tax dollars are used to maintain the infrastructure and quality of the county and provide services to its citizens, but St. Lucie County has an average property tax rate higher than 88% of counties in America. Cutting property taxes means cutting services and maintenance unless alternative funding is acquired. How will you work to stabilize or decrease the tax burden to citizens without impacting services and infrastructure quality? You start.
What I would like to see happen is if you look at your tax bill, you've got your tax dollars allotted for different things. For instance, mosquito control. I worked for the mosquito control taxing district, so that money is going directly there. I've been there 17 years. Other districts, your erosion and different districts, as well as the external ones, the bed tax and stuff, what they're doing is not always committing these things to what they're supposed to be going towards. And having worked there within the county, I see, I see the people that are doing the roads and that are doing the parks and wrecks, and the money should be going towards that as opposed to growth of the administration. I'd like to see it going towards the services that are actually being paid for and allowing those to be the ones, the employees to be the ones that benefit as opposed to bringing in from outside layers of bureaucracy to oversee, and that's where the money tends to go to instead of the actual services that are necessary. Do I need to answer any more part of that question?
If that's, unless you want to, that would be fine. We can go on to Ryan Collins. Same question. How would you stabilize or decrease the tax burden to citizens without impacting services?
Yeah, that's a great question. St. Lucie County has ended up with the distinguished, to have the distinguished, being the highest property, highest tax average in the state of Florida, and that's happened. We've had eight straight years of increased property tax revenue. That means our homes are valued more each year, the tax being brought on them for eight straight years has occurred. So we've really missed the chance, each of these years, I feel, to reduce the property taxes without relinquishing much of the services that we offer. Fort St. Lucie now is in four straight years going on five of property tax reduction without seeing a big drop in their services. I think the money that you're spending needs to be looked at closer, certainly, and the revenue being brought in. The county purchasing properties that removes that revenue from the tax roll is a detriment for us. We should get out of those types of investments. There's, should be pieces of the property, simple lots that should be identified and sold to get those on the tax rolls. And as far as cutting services, those, that's what nobody likes to hear, and I understand that. I would like to go through these services, review them very closely, and take recommendations that we've had. For instance, the Citizen Budget Advisory for the county had recommended a 1% cut through all departments in the county. That was their recommendation. It didn't go anywhere past that. The county commission didn't look into it. The administration didn't look into it. So I think that's another thing. You know, we all have to budget in our private businesses and our homes a certain way. We need to start working at it like that from the county commission to say that we need to find other avenues rather than just raising taxes each time we face a budget crisis.
Okay, staying with the topic of tax dollars and staying with Ryan Collins, the county's budget, what projects and initiative of the county budget do you believe deserve the most financial support and which do you believe can function with less financial support?
Okay, I believe a big thing, of course, is roads. Everybody that lives in this county knows that roads can be approved upon. There's a lot of repaving needed, curbs to be added, drainage, things like that. That's one of the main focuses of the county commission that should be. I believe that that's where the money should go and those things should be prioritized. Just a couple of years ago, we ourselves as taxpayers voted to increase our sales tax because we recognize that need. So instead of always looking back, I would like to prioritize that along with other infrastructure, drainage, bringing sewer and water facilities into different communities and different neighborhoods. We're definitely lagging on that. And then the, as far as taking money away, I think the biggest thing is the investments that we've gotten into. We have a lot of debt service. The port for entrance, for instance, we're paying $1.1 million a year over the last two years on top of not collecting the property tax revenue off the property. And I think we, if we focus on the basics and get out of things that are called investment, I think we'll be way better off and have the ability to lower taxes through that.
Okay, same question to Betty Jo Stark. Which initiatives of county budget deserve the most financial support and which can function with less?
Okay, as my opponent has stated, I do like fixing our roads and our bridges and our infrastructure. Transportation needs to be looked at. Zoning and permitting is also a problem. Citizens have issues with getting permits for some of the basic services. It's too many layers of bureaucracy cut through and too many odd timeframes as well as I, taking a look at the port. That is just, I don't hate, I hate to use the word debacle, but we should have not tied that up with just one person, one group to bid on it. There are other people that are willing to bring in money and we've lost money and the trickle-down effect of that, it is a bad investment. We should be able to open it up to more than one, even if director was to stay there and haven't, even though they haven't paid their money and it's due as of September 1st, which I don't know what's going to happen there, they, there should be the opportunity for the competition and the free market. The government shouldn't be competing with the free market, which are job creators, and they should be allowed to use the money instead on our services that we're paying for in our taxes. But I just see that whole director thing as, sure, it looks great on paper and it sounded good, but the decision cut out a lot of, a lot of people that would have brought in. I could give you a list of the trickle-down of what would have benefited from it. So just better, better management.
Okay, next question starts with Betty Jo Stark. Both the federal and state governments provide public funds in the form of grants for local programs to assist in financing infrastructure development and repair programs. Infrastructure is a major priority of the county's budget, but the budget is stretched thin and taxes are high. What experience in acquiring alternative funding will you bring to the county commissioner position?
What I would like to see happen is them to cut the size of government because what they are doing, having worked there for 17 years, I stop and I look and I see the growth of government, jobs created that were not there before, and we're talking hundred thousand dollar jobs. You get, you create two or three of those in a month or several in a year, that right there is money to grow government instead of providing the services. The outside grant would be fine to get, there's plenty of opportunity for them, but you have to be careful who you're taking your grant money from because sometimes they want something in exchange for it. For instance, they want you to commit to regionalism as opposed to remaining autonomous. And I hate to see us become part of a big megalopolis coast-to-coast, all the way from the top to the bottom. I like the charm of St. Lucie County. So our government, the elected officials need to be the ones that are responsible for making the decisions, for where the spending goes, and say no to the administration, that would relinquish some of the need to ask for external funding. And like, like we all do, have to live within our means. That's, that's where I would start, is with the growth of government, so we would not have to ask outsiders for money.
Okay, same question to Ryan Collins. What experience in acquiring alternative funding will you bring to the county commission?
Sure. My experience in small business, as I said before, I've owned, worked for, and managed very small businesses in different industries. You know, through the recession, through it all, we, we were faced with tough decisions. It was cutting back on what we had planned to do to expand the business. It was taking a lower paycheck. It was multiple things. So problem-solving has always been a part of my career in any industry that I've worked for. So I think that experience of saying, let's not put it off the backs of the taxpayers, let's do everything we can to find alternative revenues is definitely what I bring as well. I would like to, you know, grant writing is a very important thing. I know that there's people on staff that are very knowledgeable of it and do a great job of it, and I would like to add to that with some experience I have, the little bit that I do in grant writing. And then also, you know, if elected, I get to choose one assistant, so that assistant, I would like to have qualifications of grant writing as well.
Okay, next question. We'll start with Ryan Collins. St. Lucie County's infrastructure, being rather old in some areas, is often overwhelmed during heavy rains and hurricanes. The abundance of unmanaged water can have devastating effects on roads, buildings, and other structures, as well as the sewer and the drainage systems. So what steps will you take to modernize the county's infrastructure that both mitigates the impact of intense weather events and is environmentally responsible? Ryan Collins.
Absolutely. That's another one of those things that I feel that we're behind in. This is something that we should have kept up with all along. I know it's a strapped budget. We hit the recession and there were hard decisions to be made then, but we're, you know, we're sitting on a healthy reserve. We're able to make other investments to the tune of millions and millions of dollars. So I think the focus, as I said, needs to go on these types of things. It's the, it's the most important part of us living here. It's a very important part of attracting new businesses and industries here to have that infrastructure that doesn't lead to flooding, doesn't lead to bridge problems, to road problems. So it's something that we haven't kept on, up on, and I think it needs to be the focus going forward. You know, if, if, you know, I just think about some of these investments that we've made, these bonds that we're paying on, to go back to the port, for instance, I mean, a $25 million investment in our infrastructure, I believe, would have yielded a lot more results in the long run. So that's, that's the other side of it as well.
Okay, same question to Betty Jo Stark. How would you modernize the county's infrastructure, mitigating the impact of intense weather and being environmentally responsible?
Okay, as a native Floridian, I understand the soil and the topography. I live in Fort Pierce in District One. That's built on high and dry, well-drained sandy soil. I do not flood where I live. What has happened is with the sprawl that we've had, we have allowed buildings to go in places that were vegetable gardens and vegetable groves and things that were not residential, but we've expanded to the point, what, what's happening is it's not percolating down into, into the wells and into the underground levels. I like the way we have this set up over here near, near the baseball park, Lawnwood. It has large drainage culverts and it flows into the savannas behind the McDonald's and underneath the Publix. That, I think, is a good idea to, to capture it, but if you have a Faye event, then naturally it's something that's going to be beyond. That also, the problem is, is to the way they, they, when they rebuilt over there off of 25th Street and Isola Bella and everything flooded, whoever the engineers are, and I'm not disrespecting anybody's education there, but some of the engineering practices in the past were not as up to par as they should be, and it shouldn't be a cookie cutter, but more a specialty design. And I would like to see us, I'd like to see us reclaim some of the trash with netting that would be otherwise washed into our water table and help, that would help reduce some of the clutter and the flow and keep it clean, and it would give somebody a job. Specialty equipment, city of Fort Pierce has that.
Okay, next question. We'll go back to Betty Jo Stark. The waterways of St. Lucie County are shared with surrounding counties and beyond. These waterways also serve to promote tourism, parts of the economy, and are essential to the beauty and to the appeal of this area. What partnerships will you work to develop to improve the water quality and mitigate further pollution and toxic algae?
Okay, just today I read Toby Oberdorff, his, his statement that he put out, how the flow is now going to be diverted. They've eliminated some of that PME trail, whatever it was underneath that was, they've actually put it up above, they've elevated it. So that right there is going, is going to help. What, I have studied aquaculture and I've worked for the mosquito control, understand the impoundment and the filtration of the water system, and I do know Brian Mast, I know he's working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I know Toby Oberdorff is working heavily with the South Florida Water Management District. I know Fort Pierce Farms flows into there. We have three water districts that are local here in this county, and they usually are pretty good at working together. But again, if we go back to those netting catch, catch basins to help eliminate some of the litter, but one of the biggest problems, they blame it on septic, but if you take a look arially, you can see all those gorgeous golf courses and all of that interface property, and everybody has a true green Kim lawn, and you leach those nitrates into the water, and it does have a buildup. It would be nice to get back to what, zero escape type. It'd be hard to talk to a citizen into it because they're sold a piece of paradise down here. So I think it has, going to have to do with the marketing of developers as well, and the golf courses somehow or another, I don't know how we would prevent the leaching, but it's not just the septic system, it's a combination of everything, but I know we have good communication. And I do, I work for Jim David, who knows very much about the St. Lucie Indian River Lagoon system. So we have plenty of good qualified people, but we have to deal with it on the citizen and business level as well.
Okay, same question to Ryan Collins. What partnerships would you work to develop to improve the water quality, mitigate further pollution and toxic algae?
I really like the way the question is asked to say which, which partnerships, you know, unfortunately, on the county level, what needs to be done on the, on the big scale to really make the biggest difference, is it going to be possible because of funding? I mean, it's huge amounts of money required to do this. So the partnerships is the, the most important thing as far as, as a county commissioner. I feel like in our area, we, we can create those partnerships. All the elected officials for our area have the same goal. Anybody that's a candidate for those has the same goal to fix this problem. So I think it's just being in good communication with them, working with them on a daily basis, and getting on the same page for identifying what needs to be done. On the other end, partnership that can, that is beneficial, and it's been done in some areas and, you know, you hope to expand it, is to partner with private landowners, you know, some of these large ranch owners that are, see the issues and they're willing to either set aside a part of their property to do reservoirs and things like that. So I think really looking into that a lot and exploring that, you know, trading off in certain circumstances one way or the other, but I think that's one thing that is kind of overlooked if we could develop those partnerships with private landowners.
Okay, thank you. And coming back to Ryan Collins for the next question. What is your plan for future development and expansion for the county? How would, or would you restrict development or would you promote it?
I think where we are, we are already set up for a lot of development. I don't know quite where we are now, but going back about three or four years, on the, on the west side of 95 in Fort St. Lucie alone, there was 55,000, maybe over 55,000 approved, ready-to-go home sites. So with that, the average 2.3 people per household, it's going to happen. We're, we're going to have the growth. Basically, there's no way, very difficult to change that at this point. I think going forward though is, is smarter growth. You know, I would like to see the developers picking up a more, a bigger slice of the true impacts that these major developments have. A new, the new development going off of, proposed off of Endrio, I think that that's, appears to be done in the right way, where that it's, they're going to provide fire departments and schools and things like that through their funding. So I would look for more of that. I wouldn't say that we need to shut down growth completely and become Martin County because it's, it's simply we're too far past that at this point. Fort St. Lucie is going to continue to grow. Fort Pierce is finally, since, since I was a kid, finally seeing some big developments come in, which is a good thing. It'll improve tax revenues and things like that. So the best I can say is going forward is just really looking, looking at it as a big picture, deciding what is the right growth and holding the developers accountable for their fair share of it.
Okay, thank you. Betty Jo Stark, same question. Future development, would you restrict development or promote it?
What I'd like to see happen, we have cycles going on in this county. I've been here since 1986, and what I see is up and down, up and down, oscillating, and they come to town, we're, I think we're about to hit one of those cycles where we're going to have the dry run because we have so many listings going on right now. There's several factors going on here. First, I hate to see the clear cut of our property, and then I call them fields of broken dreams. They sit there for 10 years. Think of Jenkins Roads between Orange Avenue and Okeechobee, and it took them how many years to finally put houses out there, same thing out West. I know, I know that Fort St. Lucie is, is taking care of itself and it seems to be growing. I would like to see them saving at least a quarter of our native vegetation. Everything is clear-cut, which impacts our environment and our native species, for one thing. We have too much commercial space along US-1 here in Fort Pierce and just different places that's not being, well, specifically, I'm thinking of, of right there on Virginia and US-1, but all along, if you, if you follow the, the road all up and down, that somehow should either be bulldozed and reused and rezoned instead. should either be bulldozed and reused and rezoned instead of taking away some of our charm. People come here because we're different. We're not a big bustling metropolis. I'd like to see us to be more managed growth and use the stuff that's already been cleared while saving and maintaining our green spaces for our wildlife and our fresh air and our quality of life as well. It's gotta be a fine balance.
Okay, thank you. And we'll come back to Betty Jo Stark for the next question. Florida has one of the highest rates of uninsured adults in the country. Minorities are more likely to be uninsured and experience a disproportionately higher rate of, of effective chronic diseases. How can your county assist in resolving this disparity? How can we become a healthier community and ensure access to healthcare for all?
I think healthcare, as I, as long as I can remember, I've pretty much worked at a place where I've had health insurance, and, but I've paid my co-pay. I remember when it used to be $20 to go to the doctor, no matter what you went to go have done. But somehow or another, we've had too many middlemen inserting themselves into the whole, the whole proposition and everything, as well as, as well as attorneys. I don't mean to be rude to people that are in these positions, but the truth of the matter is litigation is, is causing a high cost on that. Having volunteered over at Lawnwood Regional Hospital, I know they do a fine job of taking in the indigent patients, and they take care of anybody and everybody, as well as the ones that come from the jail. The county is putting forth a good responsive amount to help them, and I think somehow or another, it's, it's just, it's out of hand, and people are going to have to be a bit more self-responsible and not just show up and expect to be treated in the emergency room because they have failed to secure their own life insurance, I mean, I'm sorry, their own health insurance. I know I spend a fortune every year on that, as well as every time I go, I try not to even go to the, the doctor, even though I have it. And if, if I have to work that hard to do it, I think other people, it's a citizen's responsibility as well. It shouldn't have to be an automatic, yes, of course, if, if you are infirm, then you go to, to the hospital, which is set up, trauma, level two trauma hospital over at Lawnwood. But it's, it's gotta be incumbent upon the individual to take care of some of the costs of this as well. The county is putting forth a good share.
Okay, same question to Ryan Collins. How can we become a healthier community and ensure access to healthcare for all?
That's a great question, and it, you know, it's very, very good question on the county level because, you know, I say everything starts locally and goes from there. So it's very, you know, expansion of clinics and things like that is definitely worth looking into. On the other side, it's very difficult. I think getting into insurance and things like that on a county level is difficult. I think what we can do is promote better health awareness, you know, expansion of parks, recreation, things like that, that, that do have programs for
I think we had a disruption of Mr. Collins.
Uh, yes, we lost audio and video.
Yeah, hold on. Oh, I think he got lost altogether. You know what, he's gonna take a couple of minutes to come back, so, oh, or not, hold on.
Sorry, I don't know, it just cut out all of a sudden.
It's okay, we paused your time, you have just over a minute left, so go ahead and proceed.
Sorry about that, that's the thing with these Zooms, right?
We're learning, yes.
So where was I? As far as promoting health awareness, you know, programs, I'd like to see expanded programs for that, getting, I think it needs to start at a young age.
Whoa, okay. Wow, that is the challenge of doing this by Zoom.
It is, it is. Um, well, how many questions do we have left?
We have one more question, and then closing statements.
All right, why don't we have Ms. Stark go ahead and answer the next question, and then we'll come back and let Mr. Collins finish his answer to this one and move on to the second, the last question. How's that?
That's fine. Going to Betty Jo Stark then for the last question. If you are elected and your policies are implemented, what will St. Lucie County look like in the year 2030?
I think we have to start with a five-year plan. 2030 is a little bit further off. What I'd like to do is to see us getting government spending under control instead of government growth. It can't be everything. They're not allowing the free market to, to succeed because they're inserting themselves too much into the system. I remember years ago, them asking about ways to, for us to save money, and all the suggestions I made, it allowed us to be in competition with, with the free market. But then here, I find myself how many years later, still working in the same place, and we're doing all the things that they said we couldn't do. So what, what I'd like to see happen is us to get a hold of our services. Again, I'm going back to zoning and permitting, and I'm going back to things like the director. Why does it have to be just one? Why can't we have other people come in and let the free market flourish? I, I'd like to see opportunity, I like to see entrepreneurship, I like to see businesses and success. And there have been, they said they, they came out today with their new mission and vision for growth, and it's a lot of my talking points. And I'm wondering, they say they're, they'd like to have certain targeted businesses. Well, I know of businesses that have been here that were manufacturing businesses that were somewhat chased away to other states because they were not underneath the heading of targeted businesses. So the point is, I'm not talking X-rated or weird stuff like that, I'm talking about manufacturing. The point is, is who chooses what businesses we're targeting? We already know we've got the water, we already know what our resources and our environment is. People like to fish, they like to go to the beach, they, they like to go bicycle riding and shopping. We have plenty of fine restaurants target, but we need the jobs, and I'd like to see that grow through the free market, through that port and airport system.
Thirty seconds.
As you go over there by the industrial way, you take a ride, you've got plenty of property there, you could use some more metal works, we could use, we have great boat manufacturers, and we have got to expand upon all of the things and allow other businesses to come into that port, and so they can make use of all of our trickle-down businesses that are here, and they can grow, and we can have good jobs for our young people to grow their families here and stay here in St. Lucie County.
Okay, thank you. And if you will stay with us, Betty Jo Stark, we'll have closing arguments in, in a few, few minutes. We need to return to Ryan Collins, and I believe we, you have some time left to finish the question about becoming a healthier community and ensuring access to healthcare.
Sure, sorry about that. Yeah, I, bottom line, encourage, improve parks, improve recreation programs, and encourage participation in events and physical fitness things.
Okay, and the last, if you are elected and your policies are implemented, what will St. Lucie County look like in the year 2030?
Uh, 2030, we, if I'm elected, I'll live, I'll work as hard as I can, and I'd like to say for sure that we definitely won't have the highest average property tax rate in the state of Florida to start off with. I think by that point, we will be much more job-friendly, we'll have more industry in the area. I'd like to see things handled in a different way with private businesses putting their dime into it rather than the county investing taxpayers' money into it and trying to pick the winners or losers out of private industry. I don't think it's the county commission's job to create jobs. I think the best thing that we can do is create the best environment and the best possible conditions for businesses to thrive. So I think by 2030, we should be able to accomplish that.
Okay, time for closing statements, and let's start with Betty Jo Stark.
All right. I want you to know that I am your water, environment, jobs, education, quality of life candidate. I'm your lower taxes, your public services, public health and safety, your history, and affordable housing candidate. We do need a county commissioner that's responsive to the voices of citizens. If I am elected, I will start with that port issue and see what we can do to expand other businesses in that port. I will secure the white city existing pharma as is with grandfathered in, in perpetuity, so that we don't lose the charm of what we have by sprawl. I will work with affordable housing for the vulnerable, so they can be self-sufficient in conjunction, and the security, for example, along with the Articopas Veterans Center and hubs, and low offenders, this is another topic, low offenders, and it need to be taught life skills because a lot of the money goes to the sheriff's department. And if we can teach life skills in conjunction with the college and the businesses, manufacturing and welding, and teach them how to make a living in conjunction also with education, law enforcement, the churches, and public defender's office and community, that will help. We need to work on our transportation, our zoning, and our permitting, as well as businesses. Just us being here and being prepared
Thirty seconds.
Will attract the businesses. They're not coming here because of our schools. So like I said, everything has to be in conjunction. We've got to work on our schools because we have, I know that's not a county commissioner's job, but everything has to be done as a community, and I'd like to work in conjunction with all of these other offices and levels to make St. Lucie County a place that people can call home with a good quality of life.
Closing statement, Ryan Collins.
I want to bring the best possible represent, representation to the county that I can. I feel like with my background, me growing up here, I'm part of this county, I'm very well-invested in this county. I'm here to raise my children, and I'm leaving, I want to leave it in a better place than, than I came to it. I think it's important to have local representation, I think it's important to have people that are gonna be held accountable. Growing up here, having family here, having lifelong friends, I will be held accountable. I want to listen to the needs. I've really, I'm not a politician, I never set out, set out to be a politician. I have no aspirations of going any higher than the county commission level. I just see there's issues that, that have been brought up, that I've followed in my lifetime. I was, you know, I, I had intentions of, of one day possibly running this pastime. Certain individuals from the community came to me and said that I should give it a shot, I should go for it. Taking that encouragement, speaking over with my family, I found that there is a need for it. I've enjoyed speaking with people. My phone number is out there, I get calls daily, messages. I really enjoy speaking with people, hearing the concerns that people have. We're not always gonna agree on what the approach to solve some of these problems are, but I definitely want to work with the people to identify what the problems are and what the best solution is to do it with the citizens and the businesses of St. Lucie County being the priority and first in line.
Okay, thank you both for being with us. We've heard from Ryan Collins and from Betty Jo Stark. Also, Roland Dorsonville will be on the ballot for the district, is he weird, looking at District One, the county, St. Lucie County Commission, and that is for the primary in August. Certainly, thank you for being with us. We thank the legal voters for members of coming up the, with the questions for today. We thank everyone for watching and informing themselves. Andy?
Thank you, Carol, and thank you candidates for joining us on kind of short notice. We wanted to get as many opportunities out to the public to learn about the candidates on your ballot as we possibly could. And in this atmosphere, it's a little bit more difficult to do it right now. So this is our attempt to inform you about the candidates on your ballot. We appreciate you joining us, we appreciate the candidates, we appreciate Carol. Thank you to the members for coming up with great questions to present to the candidates to get to the bottom of their vision and their platforms. Please follow us on Facebook so you will be alerted whenever we have another forum coming up, and visit vote411.org to learn more about the candidates, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.